Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, July 24th, 2019. If we could all please rise for the budget agents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just is something not right with coming here in July. My car almost didn't even want to take the left. Okay, so before we get into the normal business, I will make a motion to accept warrants 54P19, 02P20, 04P20, 55V19, 57V19, and 03V20. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We don't have a student rep here because they're not in school. Lucky for them. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda this evening? Okay, great. Okay, we're gonna get right into business. We're gonna talk about our year-end financial situation.
Yep, so the year is closed. It went relatively smoothly. You know, we were able to purchase the things that we had talked about in June. And everything came in before the end of the year, which was nice. We had a bit more in special education left, but we did prepay. So we ended up prepaying July and August for about five students. Yeah, and then, you know, the revolving accounts, for the most part, are looking pretty good. There's a couple that are a little... The one that is concerning to me is the Pembroke Extended Day, I think, because we have kinda taxed that a little bit more the last couple of years. So, yeah, I'm not quite sure how we're going to fix that one. But, school choice, we have only received one application for the 10 slots in 7th grade that we-
Oh, my goodness.
-had opened up, and actually, one student left too, so we just kinda replaced the one that left. So we're still at 36.
No, the good news is we didn't base any of the budget on that.
Right.
That we did not count on those slots in order to support something in the budget.
Right, we just counted on the ones that we had, yeah. School lunch, we'd be very happy to see that we ended up with a positive balance. Everything was charged there this year, so that was good, because we have not done that in the past. So I think it felt pretty good that we ended up with 31, but that doesn't even include the $6,600 that will... that really belongs in FY19.
And what do we need for startup?
Do you normally aim to have like 20 in there for August?
Yeah, usually like 20, 25 for him to start up. But the good thing is, we don't usually get those invoices in until like October.
Oh, right, okay.
Right.
So-
You can order and then pay.
Yeah. So that kinda helps. I did include the transfers, which were done at the end of the year, so need a vote on that. Also, where we did do the transfer for the bad debt, I wanted to get a vote to... for the final number, because I had said it would be around $5,000.
Do you know the breakdown of old bad debt versus this year's bad debt, or plus or minus?
I wanna say it was around $2,000 for the old, and so the new was around $4, yeah. And it kinda... it kinda built up at the end of the year, and then it didn't... it didn't go away. So, they were trying. They were constantly and con... you know-
So the new bad debt is $4,000?
Yeah, around $4.
So, $4,000 of lunches were bought but not paid for.
Well, I'd like to see how that breaks down too, in terms of like, under $50, over $50, over $200.
Right, right.
Right, to see exactly how many families or children that is. Because that's... in the past, that's what we've noticed, is it looked like a big number, but it was a couple of-
Just a couple of families.
-people that were really high.
We... 'cause I know, guess, there were a few times when we went like $4 under. If we wound up June 30th, or whatever, that you closed it out, $4 under, did you have to write off that $4? Is it that?
Yes, but it wouldn't be, because we ended school earlier than that, so we know... we know what it is by June 30th. We do have to have the final number.
Right, nothing, but if we didn't... so between June 20th, or whatever the last day of school was.
And people paid off, you mean? If people-
No, so if I'm saying if we were a few bucks behind-
On June 20th?
On June 20th. And we didn't pay it off by the time you closed it out.
Right.
Was that treated as bad debt?
Yes.
So now, when we go back in September, or even now, do we have a minus $4 account? Or are we back at zero? Because it's been moved over to the town.
We still get it from the parent. We still try to get it from the parent.
Right, but it is back... it's back at zero, 'cause we had to balance that out. But then, we... but we do-
Your own records, yeah.
Yes, they're on record, right. So we will still be reaching out to those parents and-
So even... I'm just... I'm just playing it up, because even my... even the MySchoolBucks account is gonna say zero, but they're gonna get a phone call saying, "You owe us money."
Oh, will it... will it say zero in the MySchoolBucks? It'll say zero in our records, but I don't know about MySchoolBucks.
Yeah, I'm not sure they zeroed out MySchoolBucks. We just had to cover whatever that bad debt was at the end of the year.
Oh, so MySchoolBucks, it sounds like, would still show the $4s?
It's still... yes.
It's like a mess, because if I now pay that $4, you need to remember to pay that... to give that to the town.
Well, that's... we have a spreadsheet that has all the names and how much they owe, yeah.
Not that we were $4 behind.
No, 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 no.
No, but it is an accounting-
It is an accounting nightmare.
And, you know, there is no other than to continue to request it and work with them, you know.
Right.
Balance is the balance at the end of June 30th.
Right, well, because on the other side, the money stays there if you don't use it all.
Right, right.
So it doesn't go away.
Right.
That's right.
In your own MyBucks account.
Right.
Yeah, so that's where we have like the prepaid amount.
But is that considered part of this, the money that's in our accounts?
No, she's put it up.
Okay, so you put that up.
It's... used to appear like that.
Right, it used to appear, so... but it doesn't anymore.
$16,000, $16,800 is on account.
On account, right, so that's really not our money.
Right. So it's 15 plus 6.
Right, right.
Yeah, we can't treat that as a surplus. Or use it to pay off the bad debt.
No, no.
But it is really important that the very generous, kind people of Georgetown who do donate to the schools know that it's needed. It really is... I mean, they should be able to see by the figure here that we're about to approve for bad debt, that it's significant and needed.
Right.
Their donations.
Yes, it does help.
Yeah.
As we do apply it.
Yes.
Yes, I know that they were working on that at the end of the year.
So the Munis software, so we purchased it and it's up and running?
It's up and running, yes. We have to get the training in.
Yeah, so when will...
It's the next step.
When will that be done?
Hopefully, within the next month or two. And then, I'm just gonna do the business office, and then we will reach out to the rest of the school. Hopefully, we'll have it up, at least partially, by January 1st. Even if it's just like the general fund stuff, you know, for purchase orders. That's my goal. So, we'll see how that goes.
'Cause it does require a change in the procedure at the school.
Yes, it does, and we'll have to train the secretaries.
So that it's not just us, you know, doing something in the business office.
Right, we have to figure out how that process is going to take place. Like, who's gonna be responsible for what, you know? 'Cause right now, the teachers just write their own and send them down to... down to the office, and so they come from every direction, but it won't be able to work that way, you know?
It's gonna be all electronic approvals too, right?
Yes, that's how it would work, yeah.
Like, for the timing, it's a lot easier than-
Yes.
And delivering a piece of paper.
Right.
Intrepid.
But it's just... it's just gonna have to be certain few are gonna be responsible for the actual data entry.
Generating of purchase orders, yeah. And so the dishwasher got delivered?
The dishwasher got delivered. It is not installed yet. The plumbers have been out to measure, and so it's in the process.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that will definitely be in by the end of the year.
Oh, yes, that'll definitely be in, yes, yes.
That is really... that is exciting.
Yeah, that would've been hard for another year.
I know, no, it wouldn't have... it just costs so much money to keep fixing it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm very happy that we were able to do that.
I'm flipping, looking, oh, that's the other... Did I... is... did I see the long-term subs were like 37? Does that-
37.
I saw a transfer in sub.
Oh, at the end, yeah.
Two subs, right? To cover that line?
The long-term subs?
Yeah, we had to cover that expense.
Yeah, probably at the end of the year.
Regular substitutes district-wide, 37, 188.
Right. So, for the long-term subs, this year, we had originally appropriated $45,000, and we spent $150, $148,500.
Oh, so it was $100 over.
Well, for the whole entire year. I mean, I had transferred-
Oh, right, right.
Getting there all along.
Oh, I thought 37 was...
No, that's a...
No, that was just the end. Yeah, 'cause if you look at the Munis report-
Right, well, yeah, see, I tried to find it in there, it wasn't.
It's, um...
It's 'cause everything winds up being at $100 for the end of the year, which is... which makes the Munis report hard to read, to see the difference.
Yeah, you have to look at the sub-line there down below.
But if you look at, um... so if you look at the Munis report, it's like the fourth page, for the subs anyway. You'll see the original appropriations, the first column, and then the revised is all the transfers in that year.
Where...
So-
So it says at the top.
Page 2 for the Munis report.
Right. And where is it, like, sec... right in the middle, or up above? Right in the middle.
Says substitutes. So the first column is the original budget, and then the second column is what we actually spent.
Oh, so it was 263.
Yeah, well, that's because of the... it's regular and long-term.
Together. No, it's together, though, Michael.
Yeah, the 263.
Right, no, but that's $170 and-
Yeah.
Right, right.
Oh, no, it's... definitely, that's a line every year that, you know-
At least for the last, I'd say, three years.
Well, I know, even before I came, Joan said, "You'll always have to cover that," because it's always-
I'll be covering it every year.
Yeah, and we haven't put any more money in that line.
Yeah, so, and this doesn't track the three-year trend, but that would be interesting to... I don't think it's in that ballpark.
And the other... the last question I have on this, and it is in here somewhere. Do you have a graduation security? There was a line unbudgeted for like $3,000, I mean, not a big number, it was $3,000. What was that?
That was paying... I believe that was for paying somebody to work the graduation, maybe...
Offlane? No. Is it security? He's talking about security?
Yeah, security. I don't know whether one of the custodians, or did... or maybe they charged the police-
Police detail? They did have two or three police departments.
But I can find that for you.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions for Suzanne?
It was a good year. All in all?
Yeah, all in all, it was. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the end of the year-
Well, the end of the year with money.
I mean, you know, it'd be worth- Make a motion to approve end-of-the-year financial report for FY19 as presented by Director of Finance and Operations Suzanne Sutherland.
So moved.
Second. For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So, the motion... okay, make a motion to approve the transfers as presented by the Director of Finance and Operations Suzanne Sutherland. So moved. I don't know, we usually do, but-
So you want...
So I'll just make a motion to transfer $203,461.05. So moved. Second.
That's the total, right?
Yep, yep.
Discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the final motion regarding this part of the meeting will be to make a motion to approve the transfer from the general fund budget to the food service revolving account in the amount of $6,025.84, as presented by Director of Finance and Operations Suzanne Sutherland.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So now we have a lease. Do you have the original for me to sign?
I do, yeah, right here.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so the Apple, um, three-year lease.
Yes. This is for the incoming 7th graders. We're going to use the facts, continue to use the facts, lease system.
And what do they do, that in the summer? They have a night in the summer with a-
They actually signed up already.
Yeah.
Like, in May.
Yeah, but they get... they get them in the summer. They do an iPad Academy for 7th grade, and they come up and they learn how to work with their iPads. That's why I think the... we need to get it approved. We couldn't wait till August.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, 'cause we need to get the devices.
I don't know if you know this, but do you know what the participation is?
I don't... I don't know, but Colin didn't mention that it's low.
Okay.
In fact, I think last year, it was-
Yeah, last year was high, and we had thought that, remember?
Right, we figured that would happen.
What is... this is for at least 60, which seems like a higher proportion. 'Cause I remember him... oh, I guess a bunch were paid off, the first payment, so they were leased, but-
Right.
Paid off right away.
Well, they would be in this group too, you know?
Right, yeah, I just remember him saying... I was thinking it was a higher number. That sort of did the bring-your-own, but it's because a lot of them hit it off right away, so he's entered it.
Yeah, right, right.
Well, a lot of people paid for it right away.
Yeah, they do.
Or one in one or two pay.
They take advantage of the, you know, the lease, but then they do pay it off, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve three-year lease to Apple Inc. in the total of $29,488.62, with three annual payments of $9,829.54, as presented by Director of Operations, Finance and Operations Suzanne Sutherland. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. It's all about you tonight.
I know, it is. Not used to this.
Okay, so-
Did we... sorry, did we wind up getting... doing the computers for the preschool teachers?
Yes.
That is, okay.
We did, they have been ordered.
Okay. Got it, thanks.
Okay, so we have a donation to accept. This is not anonymous. Okay, so, donation has been made in the amount of $1,000 to be used by the Pembroke School Principal for miscellaneous items. So that was a very generous gift of $1,000 by the Quab family, Anne Marie Tyckaub. In years past, they have been very generous to the school district, and we definitely appreciate that. They... with Smartboards, I remember all those donations, so thank you very much, and this is just another example of their generosity. So I will make a motion to approve the donation in the amount of $1,000 to be used for miscellaneous items by Pembroke School Principal from Mr. and Mrs. Tyckaub. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Again, thank you very much for that donation. Acceptance of a donation for the Middle High School for Rachel's Challenge from the PTA. And that's in the amount of $4,800.
What was the Rachel's Challenge event?
When was it, or what is it?
What in?
It's a... it's a... I don't know all the details of it, to tell you the truth, but-
There we go.
Okay, Jack, good thing you came.
I actually really had the privilege of participating in a Rachel's Challenge in the past.
Oh, good.
It's really an incredible piece. It's based on the Columbine shootings. So all the people who worked for Rachel's Challenge were involved in some way with Columbine. Rachel was actually the first child who was shot at Columbine. And she was, you know, a very peaceful child that always tried to help the underdog, and so her family, her father and her brother, are the ones that really run this company. And I had brought it to a previous district, so I got to... we were very fortunate that we had the brother was the one who came. And so I got to take him around town to show him, just an amazing person. He was in the library, which is where most of the children were shot. And he was underneath a desk, and his best friend was next to him. And his best friend was black, and that's who they immediately went after. So they shot his best friend, turned the gun to him, and got distracted and left the library.
Oh, wow.
So it's, um... So that's sort of the backstory, but what they focus on is just eliminating the heat, you know, and really just spreading peace, doing what you can to make sure that everyone is a part of the culture within the school.
And was he older or younger than her?
He was younger.
Younger.
He's a director, he does PBS things, yeah. It was really just... it was, for me, like, there was a PV portion of it as well.
Yeah.
Like, that was the best PV I've ever done. It was just amazing.
Focus on creating a culture of belonging and acceptance and-
So it's all consistent with our themes.
Diversity and including everyone.
Just amazing.
Well, it's nice that something like that came out of such a horrific event, but, you know, I think people can always remember where they were when they've-
That's right.
-when they heard what had happened. And I think now it's just getting, you know, when you see the school shootings now, it's almost like you're not as shocked as you were back then, right?
Sadly.
Yeah, sadly. But, wow, that's interesting, and that's wonderful, that the family did take such a horrific thing and, you know, used her name to, you know, promote such great things. And like the superintendent said, that's something that our district certainly wants to continue to promote. So, you know, as always, the PTA is very generous.
It's a generous amount.
Yeah, they're doing a great job with, you know, fundraising and just being able to provide situations like this. So I appreciate all the members of the PTA and all the people that run things, like Cheryl and, you know, it's a lot of work, you know? And that organization does a fantastic job. So, with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the very generous donation of $4,800 from the Georgetown PTA for the Rachel's Challenge event to be held at the Middle School in November 2019. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd love to hear how that goes.
Yeah, we'll give you more information about it as it comes up.
I'm sure, great.
I like to get it myself more myself. Thank you, Jack, for explaining that.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, approve the surplus. Oh, of course, we want to surplus that dishwasher.
We do.
We do not want that hanging around.
Yeah, we need to get rid of it.
The musical keyboards can't be used at the youth center?
According to Michael, they're too far gone to be fixed. Yeah, they're all broken.
They could be fixed, Mike, fix them.
Yeah.
'Cause, right, I did see some keyboards up there already, so.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve the surplus of the Georgetown Middle High School dishwasher and say good riddance to that, and eight musical keyboards, as presented by Suzanne Sutherland, Director of Finance and Operations. So moved. Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now on to the business. The superintendent would like to talk to us about the athletic director position. Right. So I did put a little memo, 'cause originally, I wasn't gonna be at tomorrow's meeting, so I... that's when it was being discussed. So this is awesome that we could do everything in one night, and all of us don't have to worry about a meeting tomorrow night. So, you know, it's the time of year, we're doing all evaluations, and we're meeting with people around their compensation for the following year. And a number of school committee members at the last meeting had, you know, provided some opportunity for me to use some money to distribute some raises, and so I used that money. But in the meantime, I had a conversation with Ryan Browner, because, you know, he wanted to talk about, you know, obviously, he's got a... I think he's got another year or something on his contract, but I think he wanted to talk about his compensation, because, you know, he had done some surveys, and I included that information in your packet. 'Cause one of the things we always do try to do is do salary comparisons, just because we want our... we know our people are never gonna be paid at the, you know, higher than most of the districts in the area, but we want them to at least be in a comparable place. And fortunately, we have managed to do that, because you see, we don't have a lot of turnover. But Ryan is doing a really good job, you know, as you see, as you look at the chart. There are some salaries that are particularly high, but I think those are people who, if you notice, they're also part of a teacher's contract. So I'm sure that that's... the teacher's contract is the part of the salary that drives it up. But there are a couple that are comparable to where Ryan is. He's currently paid $55,000. And so in my notes to you, you know, I had told Ryan when I met with him that, you know, I asked him what he was trying to shoot for. I told him I didn't think I could get him all the way there, and I'm not requesting that we get them all... him to where he wanted to be. However, I do think he makes an argument. I think there's an argument to be made to move his compensation up. He also works a full-year contract, as opposed to a 204, 5-day, like a lot of other people do. They don't work in the summer. Because he's on the maintenance department, he also works in the summer. He does get, like we do, paid vac... you know, paid... some paid vacation. And he gets holidays, you know, that everybody else gets, but he still works more days than his colleagues in the area. So, you know, I'm asking, you know, I... based on the money I had, I could... I think I wrote it in the memo, I could give him a small bump, but it wouldn't... it would've been a, you know, a relatively small bump. So I thought, well, you know, I went over my list again, and I felt like I didn't really have any more wiggle room. I felt like where people were was where they needed to be. So I said, "Well, I just need to go back and talk to the school committee about it," 'cause you... you're the only ones that really can appropriate the money. What is that, a percentage, the 50 to 12? I don't know what you're asking.
Again, 55, it's about 10.
I'm sorry, I missed what you were asking, Barbie. Just what percentage of a- Yeah, I... yeah, I sort of didn't do it on a percentage, because it's really, you know, it's really more of a... more of a readjustment, I guess I would call that, based on... We have done that with some other people over the years, when they've sort of proven their, you know, their worth. A lot of times, people come in at a lower salary, because they're just beginning or just learning. And, you know, I think in Ryan's case, you know, he took a lot of extra responsibility on this year beyond that he was... you know, if you ask anybody, he's at everything. You know, he does a beautiful job on the grounds. He maintains all of the middle-high school fields, you know, on his own, really, pretty much, unless there's, you know, some need to have somebody else come in. So, you know, it's not like he just helps with maintenance occasionally. You know, he's a member of the maintenance department, and in the wintertime, you know, he's there till 9 o'clock, you know, three to four nights a week. You know, he has... you know, during the playoffs or weekend commitments, you know, Ryan does go to the games. And you could say, "Well, that's part of his job," but I know a lot of athletic directors that don't go to everything. I mean, Nancy will even tell you, you know, her boyfriend is an athletic director, and, you know, not every athletic director's at every event. And not that Ryan's at every event, but I think he goes above and beyond. I think he's... I think he deserves a raise. I'm trying to get him to basically the low end. The boosters, he's very helpful with the boosters, helping to launch that. And that really has a lot of different levels of, you know, who he needs to be talking with and-
Right, right.
Helping to get involved and some of that kind of-
Right, and I know he works with GAA, you know? He's definitely, you know, made some of those, you know, those inroads and those connections, and, you know, all of that is important.
He knows his numbers, too.
Well, he worked within the budget. The budget ended on the positive, you know? And that's something, again, like food services, for a number of years, we were... we were covering it. We were covering up to $14,000, you know? Sometimes more than that. So I believe he's, you know, he ended in a-
Yeah, it's positive.
Positive.
Is it?
Are you wondering if it is positive?
Yeah.
No, it was.
Okay.
It was about, I think, the athletic portion was about $10,000, I guess.
'Cause this includes the booster side.
The fundraisers.
Fundraisers.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The fundraisers.
Right.
Right.
So-
Split it up into two, it was... you had... you split it up into two. No.
That's conversation for another day, but.
You want to split it up?
Yeah.
We can, but we just.
If they're two separate buckets, they should be two separate buckets.
Well, they are two separate buckets.
They are, they are still kept as two, but they're in one bucket.
Well, they're listed as one bucket.
Your bucket.
We should rename the bucket.
Well, I think the, the argument was because sometimes it gets really low.
Sometimes it gets what? Low. Oh, okay. Because remember, we, you know, some, the, the membership changes or the, the registration changes. Um, and we have people that come on payment plans, so. Right, yeah, yeah. So it's not as simple as, you know, we know on this day. But the payment plans are pretty, um, like, quick, like they're like monthly, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
During the season.
But we historically have some challenges with the payment in the last sport.
Oh.
So in other words, yeah, because people know if they don't pay, they can't play.
Can't play the next sport.
Right, so sometimes when people get to the third sport, they're a little.
But we have been doing really well with.
But we have, we have, yeah. So anyway, I, so I'm just making a request, um, to just increase the amount that I actually have for Ryan to, you know, at least the lower number. So I can say, work, you know, um, he definitely has been a pleasure working with in this capacity as well as as a parent, um, of student athletes. I mean, you know, as the superintendent mentioned, he is definitely visible at most of the ones. I mean, I'm sure probably more than I, I just don't like I look for him either, but you know, he's, he's very present. Um, and I think that says a lot to not just the athletes, but to the parents. The parents have needed that, um, for a while. And I think that just goes to show that we, um, we recognize the importance of that and, um, you know, the student athletes deserve that too, to have someone that has that type of, uh, commitment. And, you know, him being a student athlete here too, I think it's pretty cool that he's able now to work with the, the up and coming, um, student athletes. And, um, as Pam had mentioned too, he's been great at boosters. We're both on the boosters committee and he's been to all the meetings and he definitely provides updates as to how the, um, the athletic department is going and what is needed and what the wants are, the needs are and business, plenty of them.
And he follows through. He follows through.
Oh yeah, he, he definitely. We just talked today, Jack, Jack myself and, and Ryan, um, with the folks from the Special Olympics because we're, we're looking into perhaps organizing, um, some unified sports teams, which is consistent with what the, the equity, the law and the things that we're working on. We're just get, they, they asked if we would have a meeting with them, so we're gathering information. Of course, we're not, we didn't move forward with it or anything, but we, we, you know, I think conceptually, we would agree with it if we can figure out a way to do it, right, in terms of, they of course come in and they supplement the first year and then they supplement a little less the second year and they expect you. But in the spirit of equity, you know, the, the concept here would be that there, it's a unified program. So there are, you know, people of all kinds of abilities, you know, um, on the team. And they actually do two a year. They do basketball in the fall and they do a track and field in the spring. And they have elementary programs as well. The Special Olympics is trying, they have, obviously have community-based programs, but they're trying to, you know, touch the school programs as well, right? So they've got programs that, you know, enhance health and wellness programs. Uh, you know, so there, there's a lot of good stuff. We just learned about it for the first time today. Um, but we would need to make, um, if we did sign on to it, we would need to make a three-year commitment to it. Our concern is, you know, do we have enough kids? Right, do we have enough kids? So, you know, uh, one of the things we talked about is maybe Ryan reaching out to see if Triton or Pentucket might be interested, you know, so we could do like a little co-op if we were going to do it. Um, but you know, like I said, we just got the information today, um, on it. So I don't know, you know, where that will go from here, but. Love to hear how that goes because Special Olympics to me has always been one of the best organizations.
Right.
And when I heard that it was being cut, um,
I know.
It was just, it, it kills you because like you had said, it's, sports are so important for these kids. It really is a way of just gaining that, you know, self-esteem and meeting other people and it's just so important as kids get older. And it's just a, a great way too to let out those emotions that, you know, kids get. And they have no other way of. So we're, so we're talking about all means all, right? So, you know, some, some kids that we would be talking about are not the, not the child, children who go out for sports or they, they, they don't think they'd make it or that, so they don't, you know, maybe they don't have any confidence. So this might be something where it's a mixed group that would, you know, it would give, might give kids an opportunity that they don't currently have, which is our overall goal, right, is to give opportunities to, to our students. So I, I will certainly be bringing more information to you about it, but I, I mention it because we were just talking about, um, you know, the, the, Ryan, you know, took leadership in, you know, being the contact person to get everybody together. So those are the kind of things that I noticed that he's, you know, willing to do and never. And I, and again, it's, I, I don't think this is anything specifically, I mean, certainly who Ryan is and what he brings to it is important and that's, you know, part of, part of the discussion. But I also think when we look at the actual job and what people are paid for the job and the commitment that we're asking, you know, I, I, I want to, I want to put him in a fair place. I guess that's where, where I'm coming from. So do we. On top of it, he's done a great job. Do we know if that amount that he would, you know? Ryan will be happy, Ryan will be happy with that. Okay, and then that would definitely give closer to his. That's right, that's right. His number at a much quicker pace. Right, so then, you know, depending on next year, you know, maybe there's another, you know, small bump for him there, but the, he's on, you know, I'm almost there. Especially with the second number, I'm almost there. But I, I really feel like, you know, if what we can do is the first number, he's going to appreciate that and, uh, it is an acknowledgement of, you know, of the, of the job and the work he's doing and then, you know, he keep, he should keep doing what he's doing, right? And, and then we will continue to make sure that we have people in our jobs in a fair place. So let me just ask you a question. This might be going a little ahead, but when do we think, or do we ever think that this position would be totally? Full-time? I don't think we're thinking that at this point. Just because of the size of the. Cause I don't, I don't think we can really add any more sports, you know, I think, I think we're at the point now, like we, we were talking about a sport the other day and I thought, but if we added it, I can't remember what sport it was now. I can't remember, but whatever, whatever it was, whatever it was, it was like, if we did it, it would compete with what we have now. And we, last year, I think, or the year before was the first kind of time where I sort of felt like, oh, wait a minute, we're having some numbers going down because we offered something else. So we just have to. Yeah, so we just have to be careful about that, that there's like a tipping, tipping point. I mean, if there's something that everybody would love to do and nobody wants to do something else, well, of course, by all means, let's, let's make the change, but I don't think that's the case. We have kids who want to do all of the things that we, we need and want to do. Um, and then we have, the other matter we have is just gym time. You know, there, there's a space, there's a space question in terms of what we, what we can offer. Um, so, um, that's kind of, I, I don't see that Barbie, but, but who knows, you know? Maybe at some point, but I, I, I feel like we, now, now Ryan is actually interested in maybe going back to school. So he's thinking he might want to go into education. So, you know, at some point, if it was Ryan, he might want to do something similar to what we did with Guy. Or with Crest too. Or with Crest. But again, those are, that's down the road. He's not in any kind of program or anything, but he was talking to me about the idea that he might want to think about, pursuing, you know, a master's degree, so.
Well, so he's still considered a part-time athletic director.
Part-time.
And part-time maintenance.
Maintenance, that's correct.
And is Guy Prescott still involved?
Well, you know, only to support Ryan if he has any questions, but pretty much Guy's doing the assistant principal responsibilities. And his, it's gotten ratcheted up a little bit. I think he's learning some things about middle schools. Guy. Oh, Guy, yeah. But I, when I talked to Guy, um, at one point throughout the school year and I had asked him how much he participated in the athletic, um, um, director position, he was saying he had full confidence in, in Ryan, that it was like minimal, like he, you know. He helped him up. Something off him or something, but it sounded like it was minimal. Yep, it was, it was. And you know, I mean, we, we always wanted Guy to stay involved, but you know, the goal in having Ryan work with, with Guy for the year that he did was to give him that exposure to what was required. And he, he had enough opportunities that, you know, now he can just take it and run, but he's got a network of athletic directors that he, that he works with. So, you know, and he's a quick study. Ryan, Ryan's like, he wants to do well. He's highly motivated.
He's very dedicated.
And dedicated. I, I have a huge amount of respect for him and, and the way he works with kids. You know, it's hard sometimes when you have a young person like that, you wonder about like that line, but he's, he's kind of old before his time in many ways. I mean, he's very mature, you know, you would not know he's probably only six or seven years, five or six or seven years, you know, younger or older than them, you know. He really does a nice job. And he knows how, as Barbie said, to work with parents, which is also another thing like for young people who have no really life experience, that can be a little bit challenging, but he's been able to navigate the line. So I, I'm, you know, just trying to advocate a little bit, you know, um, for him before we just, you know, close, completely close things down. Another good thing with being an athletic director too is, um, they're such, they're a group that are so complimentary to each other, like, um, when I went to school in Melrose, like it wasn't abnormal for the athletic director in Melrose to be, to know like the name of pretty much every athletic director at the state almost, because they. Yeah, Nancy's, Nancy's boyfriend knows Ryan well, yeah. I think they, they gather together or I think they just.
They have confidence.
They do, they have confidence, yeah. So I mean, he's lucky in that aspect. And so you were saying that he basically does the high school fields, like he. Yeah, so that's how Mike sort of, you know, helped him define it was, and the other advantage to that is because we were having some problems previously with some fields weren't ready. You know, there was a miscommunication. So part of how we resolved that was Ryan knows the schedule. So Ryan knows what fields need to be ready. So Ryan pretty much focuses on, on those fields at the high school. And then of course, other people come over and help him if that, if there's a, a need. Um, but that's kind of how they've divi-, and Ryan, I've seen, we've seen Ryan come over and help with other projects, but you know, certain times of the year, you're not mowing the fields as much, right? So. But the maintenance department really likes having him. He's, you know, he's a good addition to that.
So how much of the salary right now is allocated to the maintenance side of the budget versus the, versus the athletics budget?
Right now, he is discharged to the middle high school interdisciplinary.
At one point it was split, you're right.
When he first got hired, it was split in the maintenance department.
When he was the assistant AD. Right, when he was the assistant AD.
Right, when he was assistant.
Because the money was coming out of the budget of maintenance.
Guy's stipend was coming out.
Of the athletic revolving.
Of the athletic revolving.
So now there's a portion of his salary coming out of the athletic revolving, the same portion that was Guy's. It's now Ryan coming out of the athletic revolving.
And the rest is in the budget.
But in the middle high school budget.
So that's around sixteen thousand? Yeah, that's what I recall.
So nothing's coming out of the maintenance.
Sixteen or seventeen thousand.
No, nothing is coming out of the maintenance.
No.
Okay.
I know, we know that.
Um, well, cause you don't, you don't know.
Yeah, it's, I get it.
You, you, you can't keep track. Um, I guess the only, the only challenge. Well, no, but you can't.
You, yeah, you can't keep track.
This is inaccurate because it doesn't include the entire athletics department and all the expenses related to it. Is what I'm trying to say.
In, in the.
The athletic salaries come out of the budget.
Budget.
Except for that one amount that has always been consistent.
Correct, yes. But it, but it's hard when, when things aren't allocated.
Yeah, you want it to be split.
You, it is much harder.
We can do that.
We can do that.
If I get an allocation, you know, we have to pinpoint what the allocation would be.
But because that athletic revolving count is always a little precarious, we don't increase the stipend. We just kind of keep that there.
Right, it would be on the budget side.
Budget side is the increase.
So it would be on a Mike's really, not.
Right.
Not athletics.
Right.
Um, I think the only challenge that I have is, is the source of funds. I've, I have a difficult time, especially with the meeting that we're having in fifteen minutes, spending money that, that we said we needed for special ed. A, not in special ed and B, in salaries in another department. The, given how, given how strong of a case we needed to make to explain to the town why we needed the money for special ed, I don't think it's appropriate for it to come from there. If it comes from somewhere else in the budget, and I get that it's moving shelves, but I think for a, a transfer to happen from those two, two accounts is not a good thing for us to do.
So from the special edic. So, yeah, so.
From, from special ed world into athletics.
Is that where we were taking it?
No.
No, I thought we were taking for salary adjustment. I might, maybe I'm wrong, but.
No, I think that it would be, cause this is, this is for FY twenty, this isn't.
Next year. This is next year's budget. July, this is, we're in the new year.
Right. But we, we, we advocated for FY twenty, a meaningful special ed increase.
Yes, we did. No, I think that more so with this amount, because we have had several resignations since the budget was passed.
Okay.
Um, and we have hired at lower.
Okay, I'm, I'm basing it on, on, on.
Did I write, what did I write? Did I confuse everybody?
Did you write special ed?
I don't know. Uh. I thought I wrote from salary adjustment, but I could, I could have been wrong.
Money weave in the budget from the projected surplus in special education funding.
Oh, okay, I did do that. But it, 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 it's sort of all in the bottle, so that's why I was looking at it. But I have no problem transferring forever. Yeah, you know, I'm arguing for the, for the redirect, reassignment. If we can pick where we want to put, where we want to reassign the money, as long as we're not taking something that's an encumbered amount already, I, I'm one hundred percent for it. Is that your primary?
It is.
We can do it from salary adjustment.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not.
I'm, I'm not opposed to it per se, I just.
Yeah, just not because of, right. But just so, just so you do know where we were coming from on that, um, is that we asked for what we asked for in the budget as we always do, based on what we knew. Okay, we now know that the amount that we asked for in the budget will be altered because there have been changes to the children who are charged to that account. So again, that's the only reason we were looking, even looking at that and it, it wasn't, it's just that was the, that, there is money there for, in that amount for this year. Happy to take it from somewhere else.
But why not take it from maintenance where he is part-time maintenance?
Well, the sal-, the maintenance salaries are pretty much set in the budget for what we have.
That was all appropriated.
That was all encumbered, right, 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 right.
Right. But like I said, we have had some savings with some, um, late resignations and new hires.
Right, so.
And what departments were those in? Um, the science in the high school, um, and I would also, I think the, the, uh, the guidance counselor.
Right, the guidance counselor, yeah, that's true.
I think in part, the conversation is going to be about the stabilization fund and, and, and a big question has been in the past, how do we know that that money, that we're giving you extra money for special ed and it's staying for special ed? We set up these, the accounts a few years ago, you know.
Oh, that one, that one particular.
Yes, it's for those tuitions and especially at stabilization, we are saying, if, if that does come to be, it's going to be explicitly for tuitions and transportation.
Yeah, for unanticipated.
For unanticipated, but if we're spending that money on other stuff, it, it, it is awkward.
Okay. Like I said, I, I'm happy either way. I'm just advocating for a bump for Ryan and if we can find that in a salary adjustment account, which is where I thought my head was originally, but I wrote something different. I wrote it earlier than this discussion, so. I appreciate you providing this information because before I got the packet, I was looking around at the salaries, um, of different communities and it didn't give me, you know, the number of days and things like that. Yeah. And I don't know if anyone has really taken, I know when we posted, when we were thinking of posting, before we did post it, I remember looking at other postings of athletic directors and it was like this long, you know, of the responsibilities for it and then the, um, postings were a lot more than what we had.
The salary was a lot higher.
Yeah. And I was taking into consideration that, you know, the size of the districts and stuff like that, of course, but, um, so I was glad to see this, that it actually lists like the, you know, the amount of time they spend and things like that, so. Yeah. So thank you. It's always, well, because, because when I met with Ryan, I mean, that's.